Good evening, folks.
Good evening. How are you, Jason? This is Peg.
Good, Peg. I've got one, two, three, four, five selectmen present. So we have a meeting to order at seven o'clock. First item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask Stephanie, first Black woman to Sussa, to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All five selectmen are present. I do have one item I'd like to add to the agenda, and it comes to Melissa Maltese. It's a request for the town to sign a petition to the governor to extend the eviction moratorium and provide rent relief to Connecticut residents. So if I have a motion to add that as agenda item 10C, I'd appreciate it.
So moved.
Moved by Marie. Is there a second? Seconded by Alan. Any discussion? Seeing none, selectmen to Sussa. Marie, how do you vote?
Yes.
Charlie.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
Alan.
Aye.
Okay. That item has been added. May I have a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
Make that motion.
Made by Alan. Is there a second?
Sarah Muska, selectman, I'll second.
All in favor of seconding, of accepting the agenda as amended, please say aye. Selectman Muska, I'm sorry, yes, selectman Muska, we'll do that way.
Aye.
Selectman Nordele.
Aye.
Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Sussa.
Aye.
Okay. Agenda is adopted as amended. The next item is approval of minutes. They are attached to your packet. Has everybody had a chance to review them?
Sarah Muska, selectman, I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of June 4th, 2020.
Is there a second?
Marie Dusso, I'll second that motion.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none, selectman Sussa.
Yes.
Selectman Nordele.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Minutes are adopted. Thank you very much. Public participation, this is one of the public's two opportunities to address the board. The next opportunity comes towards the end of the meeting, just prior to executive session. So if there is, is there anyone who would like to address the board? Mr. Mixata.
How you doing? Nick Mixata, 24 Sullivan Farm Road. In regards to the discussion that was held during the last meeting, I think a very important point of order that I don't know was discussed in the minutes, is the fact that the Warehouse Point District and the members and the citizens that live in the Warehouse Point District can at any time go to that district, participate in those meetings, and change the taxation themselves. And as such, they have not done that, and the citizenry of the Warehouse Point taxing district has not displayed anything of the sort by its voting record. And I think that needs to be acknowledged because the problem needs to be defined by the citizens. And the citizens, if they have a problem, are not showing up to their elected representative body to voice it. That's, that's my public participation for this part.
Thank you, Colonel. Any other public participation? Any other public participation? Seeing none, we will move on. And actually, I'm going to ask that we go out of order in the interest of Attorney Adriana's time. And I had asked that the board take up agenda item 9B, fire service funding. Can I have a motion?
Make that motion to go out of order for fire, first, fire funding.
Is there a second?
Selectman, I'll second.
Motion made by Alan, seconded by Sarah. Any discussion? Seeing none, selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman Sussa.
Aye.
Selectman Nordele.
Aye.
All right. So we're going to take up agenda item 9B. Last night, emailed around a very, very draft potential ordinance to move down a pathway that we had talked about at our last meeting. I want to emphasize that this is a draft that was put together at the board's request by Pullman and Comley for discussions sake. This conversation, or this agenda item will include Attorney Mike Adriana from Pullman and Comley and the Broadbrook Fire Department Leadership, Chief Arkery, Deputy Chief Bancroft, and Assistant Chief Bancroft. So what we're trying to do is formulate a mechanism to address the tax disparity between the two sides of town in a way that still preserves the culture, heritage of the Broadbrook Fire Department and the, really, the leadership structure, but sets in place a mechanism under Chapter 7-301 of the general statutes so that we can utilize that as a funding source for the Broadbrook Fire Department. By doing that, taking fire service completely out of the town budget, we would effectively be neutralizing any type of tax disparity or perceived double taxation. So with that, I'm going to have Attorney Adriana kind of walk us through this ordinance draft, and then we can open up to discussion between those parties that I've identified.
Okay. Thank you, Jason. Again, I am Mike Adriana, partner of Pullman and Comley. I deal primarily with public finance matters, representing a number of towns and fire districts as well. I think some of you'll remember me. I was at the public hearing, I believe it was back in February of this year. So just before we kind of dive into the ordinance, again, I, I want to just kind of provide a summary. And, and starting out, I, I feel that, that this, kind of this proposed ordinance and the idea of creating a town fire department for the Broadbrook area under 7-301 seems to work very well for what the town's trying to accomplish. It is probably simpler than creating a, kind of a second district, very similar to Warehouse Point, but it does accomplish what the town's trying to do, which is have effectively taxpayers in Warehouse Point pay for their fire service coverage and taxpayers in kind of the non-Warehouse Point Broadbrook area pay for fire services in their area. It, it does a good job of that, and I think the important thing, which I've heard a little bit tonight and which I've read through, particularly in the minutes from your June 4th meeting, it also accomplishes kind of one of the goals of preserving kind of the history and culture of the Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. Now, I think, I think all of you understand that, but it's important to understand that Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. is a separate legal entity, which has effectively been providing fire services within the Broadbrook area. If the town were to decide to go forward with 7-301, they could still be in place and the way I would envision it, if this was approved, that the town would enter into, for lack of a better term, fire, a fire service agreement with the Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. to continue to provide fire services within the Broadbrook area. So I just wanted to kind of lay that out early on. The other thing that's, that's kind of important to note is because Connecticut statutes require that this kind of town fire department be established by an ordinance. In the town of East Windsor, an ordinance is voted on or approved or not approved by town meeting. So effectively, everyone in town will have a chance to vote on this. This is not a vote of just the, kind of, the Broadbrook voters. It's everyone in town would have the opportunity to vote on the creation of this town fire department. So that being said, I will kind of work through fairly quickly through the ordinance and then kind of really open it up to questions and discussion. So this draft ordinance that we prepared is based on a number of things. It's based, obviously, on the statute. It's based on some provisions which are actually in the Manchester Charter. The town of Manchester has a system very similar to this where they have what's called an Eighth Utilities District, which provides fire service, and that is a fire district very similar to what Warehouse Point is. And then the remainder of the town, what used to be called the South Manchester Fire District, is really now the town fire department, and, and they use 7-301 so that people in the South Manchester area pay for their fire services and people in the Eighth Utilities District pay for their fire services. It's been modeled kind of after that. There are other municipalities. I could, we looked at some provisions from the town of Newtown that has a similar setup, and also the city of Bristol. So, so the general idea is to create effectively a town fire department under Section 7-301 of, of the Connecticut general statutes. The, you can create a, a, effectively, a geographic area for the town fire department, and that's laid right out in the statutes. And effectively, what we're doing is saying it is the entire town minus the Warehouse Point Fire District. And that's important because the statute also provides that taxes for the support of the fire department can be levied on taxpayers that are within the town but outside the Warehouse Point Fire District. So essentially accomplishing what you're trying to do is have Broadbrook taxpayers pay for their fire services and Warehouse Point taxpayers pay for their fire services. And those expenses and mill rate for the tax, for the fire services within Broadbrook are approved at an annual meeting, kind of similar to how your town budget is approved. Now, I know, I believe in East Windsor, you, your budget is ultimately approved through referendum. I think under the statute, approving kind of the expenses and the mill rate for the Broadbrook Fire Service does not need to be approved at referendum. It could be done at a town meeting, but that's something we can discuss and figure out what makes the most sense. So I've kind of gone through the first three sections of the ordinance so far. Section four is important and something we'll have to work on down the road because section four talks about kind of buildings and equipment that, that already exist within kind of the Broadbrook Fire Department. And one thing that I'm not sure of at this point, we can talk a little bit about it tonight, is who owns, say, the firehouses and the trucks within the Broadbrook, you know, fire service area? And who ultimately paid for those? And whether or not we need some sort of arrangement to sort that out? But that, again, can be sorted out, and, and it is very flexible. Section five of the ordinance, I think this is important too, and I mentioned this early on, is the idea of if this is approved, the town would enter into a fire services, a written fire services agreement with the Broadbrook Fire Department, you know, comma, Inc., the separate legal entity. The idea would be that they would continue to provide fire services within the Broadbrook area. Section six is, so when you create this town fire department, there, the statute provides for a number of ways that it can be governed. It, it does provide directly in the statutes that, you know, if desired, and it's one option, is that the Board of Selectmen can basically kind of govern the, the town fire department, but it also provides that you can elect or appoint a Board of Fire Commissioners. And it lays it out in the statute that how those fire commissioners are elected or appointed is really subject to the terms of the ordinance. So it does give you a lot of flexibility as to how you, if you want to go down the route of a Board of Fire, a Board of Fire Commissioners, how they are appointed or elected. You know, it could be a number of different ways. Here, for, you know, I guess for a starting point, we have suggested in the draft ordinance that you have a Board of Fire Commissioners, and those, and those board members are appointed by the Board of Selectmen to serve three-year terms. Again, that's just a starting point. There's a lot of flexibility there. And then section seven and eight kind of talk about, you know, the conduct of the fire department, how that there would be in this annual budget, and that the use of those funds and kind of all budgetary matters would be subject to Board of Selectmen and Board of Finance review. So I, I think that's probably enough for tonight about going through the details of the ordinance. I'm happy to answer any questions or any, any points of discussion with, which, you know, kind of still remain in your head. And where we go from here, I can say one thing, you know, one thing that the board's going to have to consider is this has to be done by ordinance. In East Windsor, an ordinance is approved or rejected by town meeting, and, and given where we are with coronavirus and the emergency orders, you know, kind of an in-person town meeting vote would be challenging at this point. So it depends kind of on your timing. I think it can be done, but the hope would be at some point, kind of in the near future, you could kind of going back to a normal in-person town meeting vote. So I'm done at that point, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Counselor. Any comments or questions from members of the Board of Selectmen or Broadbrook Fire Department Leadership?
Jason, Jerry Bancroft.
Hey, Jerry, how are you?
Good. I've got a question, a couple of questions, and I don't mean to step on the fire chief's toes or anything, and he can obviously correct me. But some of the questions we had were the way the Board of Fire Commissioners are elected or appointed. Is that something that our current Board of Directors can transition into? Is that, can that happen? Would the selectmen appoint them as the initial Board of Fire Commissioners to get this thing going? Or does it have to go and, because we would like to see fire commissioners appointed that are residents of that district, so-called district, I guess, if you want to say it.
Attorney Adriana?
That, what, what, what you laid out there, Jerry, is, is a viable alternative. And, and, and I can read right from the statute. I mean, this is going to be, I think, an area where the Board of Selectmen and maybe representatives of Broadbrook will, will need to have a little more discussion. But as the statute reads, it says, you know, as I said, "Discipline and control of the fire department can be had by the Board of Selectmen or by a Board of Fire Commissioners of such number, chosen in such manner and for such terms as the ordinance provides." So again, if you're going to go down the Board of Fire Commissioners route, there's a lot that could be done there. Terms, numbers, how they're selected, that's all open for discussion at this point in time.
Okay. I think that, I think that Jerry raises a good point, though, in phrasing his question, that there needs to be some surety in, in the document that the fire commissioners would be residents of this department's jurisdiction.
Yeah. And I hear that, and, and it's not a problem to include that in the ordinance from a legal standpoint.
Jason, question from our side. Is there anything that would prevent us from creating an ordinance? So before I ask the question, let me just step back and recognize there is nothing in the town charter or in ordinance currently prescribing that the fire protection services are provided by Broadbrook Fire Department, Incorporated. It's just, it's just been done. Why not just create an ordinance that sets up that the town will provide fire protection services by the Broadbrook Fire Department, Incorporated? We maintain the autonomous identity that we have with our current structure, with our current rules and regulations that we have. And the only thing that we set up in there is the, is the assessments and the taxation clause for the appropriations of funding. Would that be a viable vehicle to get to what you're trying to do?
Oh, there's a couple of things to unpack there. The first is, is there anything in charter or ordinance that actually establishes the relationship between the department and the town? And the answer is, I've been able to find. It just has always been done, to your point. But the, I think the, the question we're trying to get to and the objective that we're trying to get to is maintaining the governance and the operational control of the department as close to status quo as is possible while addressing the funding side of, of the question. And that's the thing that Attorney Adriana can speak to more specifically as to whether or not the hypothetical you put forward is even possible under the law.
Well, under statute, hypothetically, the ordinance needs to be passed in accordance with 7-301 in order to set up the funding mechanism the way we want it, where effectively Broadbrook taxpayers pay for their Broadbrook fire services. That ordinance, there's nothing in the statute that prevents that ordinance from also having language that says, you know, the town will enter into an agreement with Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. as for kind of the, the management, you know? And, and if the decision is, we're going to have a written agreement that basically says, this is a town fire department, but we're hiring Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. to provide the fire services, kind of the, the way they've been doing it, that's okay. The only thing is kind of the, the Board of Fire Commissioners or the body that, that governs this, quote, town fire department, that needs to be in the ordinance. And that would kind of be viewed from a legal standpoint more as a town body as opposed to a Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. body. There's, I'm not saying it can't be, you know, the existing commissioners that are there now, but it's, it's just a slightly different setup. I, I think, I feel, based on what I've seen in the statute, what I've seen other places, and what I'm hearing is, at the end of the day, you could set up a structure pretty close to what you have now with the additional ability to, to tax Broadbrook taxpayers for their fire services and Warehouse Point taxpayers for their fire services.
Thank you. I, I just want to point out that currently, as an incorporation, we submit our budget through the Board of Finance, and it's, it's approved. So there's no, there's no town representation on the corporation board. And that hasn't necessarily been an issue because the Board of Finance reviews the budget and says whether or not they're going to approve it and recommend it to the Board of Selectmen for the referendum. I, I don't know, in looking at 7-301, and we have it here, I don't know why we couldn't leave that vehicle in place where the corporation submits its budget request through its own governance to the Board of Finance as it's currently done.
Um, yeah, I, I think a lot of this is really still open to discussion and negotiation. I haven't heard anything tonight where I would say, you know, absolutely, you can't do that. I would say this as well. I don't think anything in here or this ordinance would talk about kind of the Board of Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. That's a separate legal entity that the town really has no role in. This would be, because what we're doing under this ordinance is creating a, a town fire department to provide fire services for a portion of the town. And it's that kind of town fire department where we're talking about this Board of Fire Commissioners would, would kind of be the body that, that would run the town fire department. And, and running that town fire department could be as simple as having a, a, an agreement with Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. and, and some kind of understanding as to how budgets would be approved and different things like that.
Other questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, go, Chief.
Jason?
Yes, sir.
I got a question about the, the current budget and what's going to happen. This was a problem before where else point, sort of taxing. What's going to happen to the money, monies that are in the budget now? Would we become a taxing district? Where is that half a million dollars going to go with the 2%?
Well, assuming, so there's a couple of assumptions to be made there. But let's assume that we get some structure in place that allows you to start using your taxing authority for fiscal year '22, which starts a year from now. Then, as the budget process warms up in January, February, the Board of Finance could take the funding for that out of the, the budget entirely. If the budget were to fail and the 2% trigger goes back in, what we could do is we could transfer the funding for fire services back to the general, effectively removing it from the, from the, the budget.
Chief, a couple more things I just want to point out there, just so we're clear. What we're talking about here under 7-301 is we are not creating, you know, what I would call a fire district like Warehouse Point is. Warehouse Point is kind of a separate, almost mini-political subdivision, which really the town, if Warehouse Point said, "We want to increase our budget tenfold," and the voters in Warehouse Point approved it, that goes through. The town has no say in that. What we're talking about here is a budget that would still effectively be, and I think this is kind of happening now, would be approved at the town level, but there would just be a separate mill rate for Broadbrook taxpayers to cover the cost of the Broadbrook Fire Department costs on an annual basis.
Mike, does that, um, separate tax levy fall under the 2% increase, like the other town departments? Or would that be separate?
That's, that's a good question, Jerry. To be honest with you, I, we haven't really got to that level at this point and haven't, haven't looked at it, but I think that's a very good question and something worth following up on to see how this would play into the 2%. I mean, I think the way I read the statute, and, and this is something we're going to have to pursue as well, the, the, kind of, the, the fire department, say we prove this again, the fire department budget and the mill rate the fire department budget and the mill rate, the way I read it, is almost like a separate vote. So we'd have to look at the 2% question and how that budget and mill rate really get approved at the end of the day.
Thank you.
You're on. Jason?
Yes, sir.
A question about, what about our pension? Is that going to, is this going to affect that at all? The fire department's pension?
The property that's owned by the pension and the cash value of it?
That's what you meant. You're talking about the property right in the pension. So that's, that is an excellent question for Attorney Adriana. And Nick, I apologize, I didn't understand what you were getting to in that text message. So, Counselor, the question is, the firefighters who are in the service now have a property right interest in the pension that they're paid through the department? Is that something that the town would need to buy out as a property holding if we were to establish this? And how would that then be funded prospectively? And how would you bridge it between guys who have had service on both sides?
Okay, I'll ask some questions. I'll give you my initial reaction, and then I'll say, when we get into pensions, I am not a pension expert, but we can ask someone here. I guess the first, where do the pension funds sit at the moment? Are they with the town or are they with Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc.?
Broadbrook Fire Department.
Okay. So if that's the case, this whole idea of fairly compensating the volunteer fire company, Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. for buildings and equipment and property is really only kicks in if part of the plan of this new fire department and the ordinance is to kind of supersede and get rid of Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. My initial reaction would be, if the arrangement's going to be, "We're going to create a town fire department so we can straighten out the taxing issues." But as part of that, the town is just going to engage Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. to do what they've been doing. I don't see why the pension would change. And however that's being funded now would continue to be funded by Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc.
Just one cleanup question on the ordinance as proposed or the draft there.
Yep.
Do you have the commissioners, as they're called, reporting the budget through the Board of Finance or directly to the Board of Selectmen? What's the mechanism you have outlined here? It goes commissioners to who?
I think what we have right now is a setup where the budget would probably go through probably both the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen.
Which is the current practice.
Yeah, so that gets to, that gets to the point that we were having sort of internally is that what I had proposed as a possible solution is the ordinance does just basically, it's kind of the California model where they contract a lot of private fire services in large areas. Basically, the ordinance would then contract the Corporation of Broadbrook Fire Department to provide fire protection services in the environs and then set up a separate taxing zone for the payment of that. So then, the only question that you have to look at is, if the Board of Finance would just review that budget, you could put that in there and I still think meet the intent of Section 7301. That's really your legal, you know, perspective to look at. But I would argue that that's probably the most appetizing vector to get to success on this because it doesn't really change any existing practice. It just puts it into writing what we're currently doing. And what it does do then is solve the problem of the extra taxation in Warehouse Point. The one point to your earlier point is, in the town meeting that this has to get voted on, is the recognition that there will be an increase moderately, not a lot. It'll be a small increase. But that would result in an increase in the Broadbrook Fire District residential area in that the Warehouse Point would not be paying for Broadbrook Fire Department services. So that would bump that budget over to just Broadbrook, which would cause a increase for the residents of Broadbrook Fire Area and a decrease for the Warehouse Point. And again, I think it'd be pretty nominal when you amortize it over all the people that are in the district. But I think that just needs to be, Jason, probably the numbers just proposed and looked at, what that would mean in an actual increase.
Yeah, if we get to the point in time where we're doing a town meeting on that, that's certainly the type of thing we would have to have at hand.
That would be, again, I think that protects the culture. It solves the problem, and it maintains the integrity of this corporation. And it puts into writing what is currently being done without changing any of the procedures or processes.
Any other feedback from the Broadbrook Fire Department?
Jason, it's Jerry. I don't really have anything else until after, I guess, we researched this thing pitched by Nick to see what happens and if it can be done. Because really, if it can be summed up like that and separate the tax monies out to make everything right by everybody, then that's probably the easiest way to go.
Any questions or comments from members of the Board of Selectmen? Marie?
Yeah, a quick question, Jason. With the Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. incorporation, if we pass an ordinance, can they, after the ordinance is passed, that we're going to make a town fire department, can they opt not to agree and not opt to join in? And could Warehouse Point say, "We want to be the town fire department." Can we opt into that bidding process? Or is it just unique, the ordinance, just to Broadbrook Fire Department?
Attorney Adriana?
There's a couple of points there. There would be, if this fire department was set up and basically, as the statute talks about, kind of supersedes Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc., then, and this where we get into questions, then the buildings and equipment and all that stuff, which I'm not, you've got to help me here as to who owns all that right now. But if that's owned by Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc., then they basically need to be fairly compensated for that?
Yeah.
Hey, Marie, just, sorry, I don't want to belabor this, but I think there's an easy fix to your question, and that would be that whatever ordinance is drafted before it goes to town meeting, the Broadbrook Fire Department, Incorporated, would take a vote preemptive upon the acceptance of the ordinance. So that way there, once the ordinance is approved, it's automatically accepted by the corporation, and they're entered into the contract. And we do the vote first by the corporation, then to the town ordinance.
Yeah, and to that point, there is nothing that would prevent the town and Broadbrook Fire Department to basically enter into this agreement to provide fire services that would be effective upon the approval of the ordinance and the effective date of the ordinance. So you could almost kind of lock it in ahead of time. If that was something you wanted to do.
Then I guess I have one more concern. With the fact that, Jason, correct me if I misunderstood what you said. But it's my understanding that we have nothing in file on the incorporation of the Broadbrook Fire Department and that separate entity. Do they have something that we can review so that we can see what's in there? So this way, when we do our ordinance, we make sure we cover everything that's in there.
So as a point of clarification, I said that we didn't, we were not able to find any type of codified relationship between the two entities, the town and the Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. I do have a copy of a lease agreement between the town and the Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc.
With the fire station.
Right, and that dates back to 2003, I think.
Yeah, and, and, sorry, Mike? I'm sorry, Jason. And Marie, to your question, you know, I did check the Secretary of State records, and Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. is a valid, active, separate entity. They're up to date with Secretary of State records. And to Jason's point, I think what Jason's saying is, and I think Broadbrook has said this too, no one can find any kind of written agreement between the town and Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. as far as providing services, fire services, to this portion of the town.
But this ordinance, if they approve it, then it becomes a viable agreement with the Broadbrook Fire Department?
I mean, my own legal advice would be, I think it would be good and valuable for both the town and Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. to have, you know, a written agreement that kind of lays out the fire services to be provided in the Broadbrook area. You know, it worked great so far without it, but it's probably better to have something in writing in place for both sides.
Jason, it's Jerry. If I'm not mistaken, and this goes back many years before I was ever in this position, but I thought at one point the charter mentioned fire protection that was provided by both Broadbrook and Warehouse Point. And then, I think when it was renewed last time, it kind of disappeared. So I don't have any older copies that date back. And I don't know if you've researched that yourself or not, but I know in the current copy, it doesn't say anything because I've looked through that.
Yeah, I did not go back and look at past iterations of the charter. But even if that were the case, it would be superseded by the current iteration of the charter, and so it wouldn't be valid anymore anyway.
I understand.
But, you know, to your point, I didn't find it in the current charter.
And just one other thing, Jason. We originally talked about a two-year term, and now it's been a three-year term, a two-year term. Now it's extended to a three-year term. And it's got, the proposal is to start it in conjunction with the annual town meeting. So I'm assuming that's based off the fact that it'll be on the November ballot of whatever year that we might get this done in order to meet the timeframe? Or do we do an interim board in between?
No, I think that was really just something that was put in as a placeholder for conversation's sake. A lot of this was put in as a placeholder for conversation.
Okay. I guess a few things, Marie, there. And I'll tell you, as to how the Board of Fire Commissioners is selected, I'll be honest, came from an example we found in another town. It is just a conversation starter. And you guys probably have better ideas as to what works best in the town of East Windsor. And my assumption has been all along, kind of given where we are and where the town is with their budget, the idea would be to get this in place, setting up for the '21-'22 budget.
I agree.
Marie, are you all set?
Yep.
Sarah?
Sarah Muska Selectman. I'd like to thank Attorney Adriana for joining us tonight and answering the questions and giving us the information. I have a question about the fire marshal. How would we be proceeding with that on the Broadbrook side of town? Would that be remaining in the general budget? Or would that be grouped into Broadbrook taxpayers paying for the Broadbrook fire marshal?
Well, okay. Are there separate fire, is there a fire marshal right now that covers just kind of the Broadbrook area?
There is a town fire marshal whose jurisdiction is, has townwide jurisdiction, but only in practice, is on the Broadbrook side.
Yep.
And I think that's established by charter.
Okay, well, I guess that would be, if it's a charter issue, we'd have to look at that. But to your question, Sarah, again, under the statute 7301, to me, it would seem like the kind of cost, unless there was something in the charter that prevented us from doing that, that you could include within this town fire department and be part of kind of the Broadbrook special mill rate that pays for fire services. If that fire marshal's providing services just in the Broadbrook area, that would make sense to me. I guess one question, and again, if we're just, I just want to throw out some ideas I thought about or concerns is, I don't know currently, does the town, are there town employees that are kind of involved in providing fire services or whatever in the Broadbrook area? Something we've got to concern ourselves there with as well, and where that goes in the budget.
So there are currently part-time paid firefighters in the Broadbrook Fire Department that are funded by town finances, but they're included in the Board of, or in the Broadbrook Fire Department's budget. So it actually probably is pretty easy to port that out.
Okay. But those, Jason, don't sound to me like they're considered town employees. I mean, they're funded by the town, but they are not...
They get their tax documents from the town. I think they meet the actual definition of their town employees.
Okay.
I think they're, I think they are part-time town employees.
Okay, I mean, that, again...
Sorry, you broke up on that last part. What did you say there, Jason?
I said, my understanding is that your part-time guys are technically part-time town employees.
Right, and this, if we did the vehicle like we were talking about, would actually clean up some of that, having two different entities working under it. You could make them actually Broadbrook Fire Department, Inc. employees with that passed through on the budget.
Yep.
Yep.
Good point.
So Sarah, does that answer your fire marshal question?
Yes, thank you very much.
Did you have anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thanks.
Okay. Alan?
Yeah, I guess I'd just like to say that Nick's suggestions in that direction that this conversation is going, I think alleviates a lot of the concerns I had. I really didn't like the idea of having the Board of Selectmen choosing commissioners and whatnot. I think we should make as few changes as possible to achieve our goal and kind of stick with that for now. And of course, there's other details that we'll get into later, you know. But for now, I think I like the way this is going.
Charlie, did you have any questions or comments? All good? So circling back to the representatives from the Broadbrook Fire Department, anything else?
Jason, Chief, I just want to thank you for, my just in the meeting, I want to thank the attorney also for answering a lot of questions.
Thank you, and thank you for your insights too, because that's going to be very helpful at the end of the day.
And we'll keep you guys involved as the process continues.
Yeah.
So speaking...
I think we definitely need to sit down a little bit more and just go over this and really hammer out some of the fine details.
Yep. So, and that's kind of the next point to get to is next steps here. As I'm looking at the faces of the members of the board, and so long as I don't see anybody who's steadfastly opposed to continuing to pursue this, you know, maybe we can have a conversation between the Chiefs, Attorney Adriana, and I, and start addressing some of these outstanding issues and then bring a second draft back to the board. Does that sound workable to everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah. That'll work, and, you know, I have some work ahead. I definitely want to look at the, your kind of charter provision about the 2% limit. So that's an interesting question, and I think it's great. I think we should just kind of try to continue down this path and hammer out something because, you know, I've looked at a bunch of options for what you're trying to solve here. And everything I've seen so far, this sounds like the best one.
Thank you, Counselor. So what we'll do is, I'll circle back with the Broadbrook Department leadership. We'll get you some dates a couple of weeks out to give you some time to do some research and then to give them some time to put any other thoughts they have on a piece of paper, and we can set up a conversation.
Perfect.
All right.
All right.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate it.
No problem. Thank you, everyone.
Take care. Okay. Okay, so we'll now return to the regular call of the meeting and take up communications, which is 7A. This one was brought to us at the request of Selectman Muska to do a proclamation commemorating Post Traumatic Stress Disorder Awareness Month. So at her request, I did issue that. Sarah, did you want to talk at all about, introduce the month or talk about the significance? Or is there anything you want to add there?
Sarah Muska Selectman, thank you to you, Mr. Bowza, for doing this. PTSD is something that a lot of people deal with. And it's not just veterans that, you know, it's victims of domestic violence, it's first responders. There's a lot of our neighbors and our friends and family members who deal with this. And it's not always talked about. So I just wanted to bring it to people's attention. I actually was diagnosed with PTSD in 2017. And it, it's been a struggle, and it's, it's basically a struggle with yourself, and it's traumatic events that have happened in your life that just won't go away. So I just thought that it was important to raise awareness on this, let people know that it is okay to talk about it and seek help to try to, you know, get through the struggle. So, thank you.
Thank you for sharing your story and for your, your leadership on that issue. The next thing I included, this is an example, so a- as you folks are all familiar, we've had a changeover in our Fire Marshal. Rich Austin has been filling that function for us since Blaine stepped out. And I wanted to include, because the question came up about how he wanted his time reported to us, and so he provided me an example of a, a monthly timesheet he'd submitted to the Warehouse Point Fire Commission, and I just wanted to use it as a way of illustrating the, the ways that we can get to those very simple things that we had been requesting for the last several months, and it's done in a one-piece, a one-cheap piece of, a one-page report explaining what he did, where he did it, how long it took. It, it's this is as straightforward as you can get, and I just wanted to share that as an example of what I hope we can be looking, looking forward to respectively.
Jason, just a quick comment. And, and if I'm out of order, please say so. In last month's meeting, um, we received the letter of resignation from the previous um, Town Inspector, um, indicated that there was, other than a printer, there was nothing that he had in his possession that belonged to the town. And he alluded to the fact that it belonged to the family. But at one time, um, the previous person, that individual, had an office where town did provide funds for equipment. So I just want to make sure that we've got back everything that the town owns, if indeed there is anything, and if there's not, that's fine too, but it's just something that came up that, geez, there should be something that he has that belongs to the town. And if not, do we have to supply it for the next person that we hire?
On that point, I have a couple of things to, to add there. I had the Treasurer's Office do a report of expenses incurred along the Fire Marshal's line to figure out exactly what we have been purchasing, and there isn't equipment that, that is included there. So I, I can't, I can't demonstrate that there has been town expenditure there. The exception to that is he is still in possession of a town-issued smartphone, and we're still paying the bill, and that, that is going to remain with the Fire Marshal, and I would like that back. The, the other thing is physical space. So the Board of, Board of Finance approved a transfer for renovations that are going to be happening in Town Hall. Part of that will include the, the allocation of office space for the Fire Marshal here. So we'll be able to keep better track of, of what's going on and have dedicated space where, where that, that professional can can be seen.
Okay.
Happening there. I'm sorry, did I hear my name?
Yes, Sarah Musco Selectman. Did we obtain the in, the information with the records? I know you said that Mr. Austin had you know, had a device. Did we get the information back, do you know?
We have some of the information, but we don't have all of it yet. Rich is working on getting that from Blaine, and when they met, there was a, an understanding that the information would be exchanged, and, and really what happened is Blaine had it on his computer at home instead of at the firehouse, so I know that, that Rich is working on getting that. I don't know that he's gotten it yet.
Okay, thank you.
But he does have, he has gone through the physical files that are in the firehouse and has started straightening some of that stuff out.
Thanks.
So with that, the next item on our agenda is going to be Agenda Item 10A, and for this, we're going to include the Chief of Police, Ed DiMarco, and the Deputy Chief of Police, Roger Hart. The Chief and the Deputy are presenting to us tonight on policies and procedures that the department uses to make sure that we don't have circumstances happen in this community like has happened in other communities around the country in, in recent times. So I asked them to put a presentation together so that we could deeper dive into those policies that I thank them for taking the time to join us and for putting their presentation together, and with that, I'll allow the Dep, the Chief to, or whoever's going to do it, either Chief or Deputy, you're able to share the screen. So the floor is yours. You have as much time as you'd like.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for having us here tonight. You'll have to walk me through. I have PowerPoint queued up. What do I just start it and hit Share Screen?
Uh, yep, that's exactly right.
So can everybody see it?
Oh, you got to push the, the up carrot in the green window.
Hold on a second. Got to push what?
So you push the Share Screen.
Yep, I got it.
And then you select the screen that has your PowerPoint in it, and then you click Share. Yep, there you go. Now you're up and running.
All right, so everybody can see it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, here we go. So the First Selectman had a conversation with me to discuss um, use of force and the national crisis that is occurring across the United States now, and we're an agency that has been ahead of the curve on this, and we're proud of it. We've done a lot of work, and we're going to spend a little bit of time talking about it. The First Selectman did say, you know, whatever amount of time we needed, and I know I'm long-winded, so I won't go as long as you all think. I'm going to try to move a, a pretty quick for you. So let's talk about core department values. We, as an agency, from the very beginning, have department-wide goals and values that we talk about, and it's the sanctity of life and partnership with our community, and a lot of what you see us do is exactly that. So we start with trust and honesty and transparency from the very beginning of, of the service that we provide. Our use of force policy is built on the sanctity of life, that we do everything we can possibly before use of force is used. Agreed, Deputy?
Absolutely, and as we move through this presentation, you're going to see that we didn't reinvent the wheel. We got a lot of these standards from other locations, and we've been using them in practice for some time.
So let me talk about real quick organizational culture. That is an individual personality that a police department has. It can be seen in a business community and other hiring practices where, where there, there's businesses, but each police department has its own personality, and we refer to that as organizational culture. You can drive through a larger city or a different location and see that maybe they're heavy-handed, or they, they're more prone to use of force or things of that nature, and that starts very early on in someone's career. There's an indoctrination process through our field training program, from the senior officers teaching the newer officers. Well, we have an organizational culture in East Windsor that we're a community caretaking agency. We care about the people we work with and partner with. We provide a service because we want to help people, and we do that through the next thing that you see there is our hiring practices. So before someone even comes here and is a police officer, many years ago, we decided to change those hiring practices, and the amount of energy and recruiting that we do from different locations, and the practices and procedures that we have set up, we bring people here, so before they even come here, they're good people, they want to help people, and we spend a lot of time making sure they're the very best people.
And the next point where we're moving into is negligent retention, which kind of reverts back to the organizational culture. If you have an organizational cu- culture that accepts substandard employees, then that brings on a negligent retention situation where they have those substandard employees, and they, and they continue to protect them and not do what they're supposed to be doing, like disciplining and taking action against misconduct. So we've done everything in our power to ensure that we do not have negligent retention. If we have a, a even a new hire person who is just not making it in the, in the FTO program, we will give them every opportunity to come around, but in the end of the day, if they're not going to be a good police officer for the town of East Windsor, we tell them it's time to find another job, unfortunately, and, and we do what we have to do to make sure that we don't retain people that can't do the job.
It's good that you mention that, Depp, because negligent retention is one of the highest areas that a police department is sued in, because you retain people, and you saw, I think it was in the Minneapolis situation, that that officer had been charged with use of force violations somewhere in the area of 20 times, and that's deplorable. That's a failure of management. If you look at the historical perspective, for a lot of you on, on the meeting tonight, you've seen our agency, and it's probably got about 70% turnover over the years of people that have had issues or for whatever, and, and we've fixed it. So I'm going to skip training because the section in the next slide is going to talk about that a little more in depth, but promotions and messaging. We take this so serious, and we're so deep into the message of proper use of force and de-escalation, that on the last three promotions for Sergeant, Corporal, and for even Special Services, School Resource Officer, Narcotic Officer, when we do those promotions, there's a reading list, then you get tested on the content of that material. Well, we put use of force, de-escalation, continuums, we put a lot of that on the actual test, so they have to study it, and they have to tell it back to us during the, the testing process. So that message that we send is that we're very serious about this, and we want you to comply with it. And we do do a lot of de-escalation training, and it's also built into our, our policy, comprehensive policy, and we'll talk about accreditation. Let me just get into training real quick. You want to start?
Certainly, um, the, a lot of our training is based on post-standard, so a lot of the training that you're seeing on the PowerPoint, implicit bias, race, gender, age, sexual discrimination, mental health and crisis, and de-escalation, that training, a lot of it is mandated by post. Post, for those who don't know, that's the Police Officer Standard and Training Council in Merida, where it's based, it's a police academy. And so by their regulations, we have to take a certain amount of training, and it has to include some of these things listed here, and those are the changes that law enforcement is going through and has been going through for the last 15 years. We are actually trying to be ahead of the game. We have an LBGTQ policy that we pushed out, that I think we are one of the few police departments in the state of Connecticut right now that has one, and we try to stay ahead of that curve with our training and with our policy.
So we don't just do race, we do gender and sexual orientation and religion and implicit bias, bias that you might not even know you have. We try to make people aware of it. The mental health, and then the crisis intervention, that's another thing we're above the curve on with trying to get people trained and certified in crisis intervention when you're suffering episodes, and a lot of the use of force issues across the country have been related to mental health, so we, we are training on that.
Further added, Chief, we, the crisis intervention training, we've also partnered, partnered with CHR, and we have a civilian social worker at our disposal that we share with three other towns. And through that grant that we received, and we talked about this some time ago, with this, with these three other towns, we also will get crisis intervention training, and ultimately, our goal was to have 25% of our people trained in crisis intervention, but we already have 11 police officers sworn in crisis intervention training, which includes de-escalation. It's a primary portion of that, and two dispatchers. Our goal, the Chief and I's goal, is to have almost everybody in the agency trained on crisis intervention techniques.
Especially the frontline, and that's where we started, with the people in contact with the public directly from the Patrol Division, so that they're, they're using that, that training. Let's talk about transparency and accountability. Deputy Chief and I have tried to do that from the onset with like the, the budgeting process and, and a lot of things. We also do that with how we operate in the world, like, you know, putting out our policy on, on the internet and our webpage and things of that nature. One of the other things we do is Power DMS, and we have to talk about that. It's, it's really redefining document management. We have all the proofs, so we can sit here and tell you, okay, we train in crisis intervention, we train in use of force, then we retrain, then we update. Well, we can prove that, because Power DMS is the computer system operating in the background that shows the policy was issued, the police officer read it and trained on it, they sign off on it. It keeps track of all that stuff, so we can, we can actually prove it. One of the other things we do, and, and I'm going to give the Depp a few seconds, because he's one of the people from very early on, in fact, I think 1990 or 91, so sorry to date you, is verbal judo. We actually go as far as giving our people training in this, but we give them a script as well. Have you been pulled over by a police officer, and the officer walks up to the window and says, why do you think I pulled you over? What is this, a test? You tell me. So we give a script. We don't do that when we pull a car over. Take over, Depp.
Yeah, it's very simple. I mean, verbal judo has been around for a long time, but we, we feel that it's important to give people a voice in, in a motor vehicle stop or any interaction, and when you give people a voice, and to give them a voice is very simple. In the motor, basic motor vehicle stop, when you approach a vehicle, you identify yourself, you identify your agency, you explain the reason why they, whatever the violation was, and then you ask them, is there any reason why that occurred? Because maybe there's a reason why it occurred. Maybe it was an accident, maybe it was purposeful, but it gives the people a voice, and that's the basis of verbal judo. You have to let people speak and be heard, and you have to listen to them, and it has to be sincere.
So we've drilled that into every one of our police officers, trained it, and then as far as internal affairs, the Deputy runs that in professional standards, and we investigate. But I put that there for a reason, because we also quality control check it. So yeah, we have verbal judo, we trained in it, we set the script. Now we, we, we let the officers out on the street, and that's one of the primary ways that police officers come into contact with the public. But now we quality control and we check it. The Deputy goes in quite often and reviews dash camera footage from those stops, and he either hears you with the script and the politeness and, and giving the, the person a voice, or he doesn't. And if he doesn't, then there's retraining and there's action, and so far, it's worked very well. We're, we're at 100% compliance, and it, it really is working.
And further on that, we, in our policy on the, on the dash cams, our supervisors, the shift supervisors, are required to go in there and review the footage to make sure that the officers are adhering to policy.
So we talk about transparency. It's a thing for us. So we put our civilian complaint form right on our webpage. We put it in the lobby of the police station. We like it to be in Town Hall. In fact, I think one of my officers met with the First Selectman today to make sure that we knew it was there. I think they were trying to confirm whether it was, or we need to put it there again. But right on, you don't have to come in, you don't have to be afraid to come into the police station, stand at the window and ask for a complaint form. You can simply go online, you can go up to that, click that button, and then the thing comes right up. A two-page document comes up, you can fill it out, and then it goes directly to the Deputy Chief of Police, and he assigns an investigative number, and we do hold people accountable. If you made a mistake, we'll hold you accountable. So we're very serious about our professional standards.
That form, by the way, is up in the atrium of Town Hall.
Thank you. So we think we're an agency ahead of the curve. Let's talk about that core value, department-wide values that I Let's talk about that core value, department-wide values that I started with. The deputy chief and I have been very fortunate to, in our careers with education and training. We both have higher level education and we've both been to advanced training, including the FBI National Academy. But one of the other ones is PERF, Police Executive Research Forum, and that is the premier think tank for law enforcement ideas, laws, and policy and procedure. Well, we've both been to the Senior Management Institute for Policing, and we spent a month in that training and going over certain things. And the 21st Century Policing and the Six Pillars was something that came out as part of their work group through former President Obama, and that came out five years ago. When the deputy and I saw that come out, we jumped on it and we jumped on it hard, and I'm going to go over that real fast. Eight Can't Wait was something that came up and we're well ahead of the curve on that. And speaking of PERF, we're going to talk about the PERF 30 real quick. So we adopted the Six Pillars as essential very early on, and I'm going to go over and spend a few minutes in it because it's that important to us. We wanted to reflect our community's values and the deputy talked about giving a voice to the community by being open and accepting to criticism, to constructive criticism and ideas, and we worked. That's part of this meeting here. We're willing to listen, there could be more we can do. Maybe you know more, know something different, or how you feel, or how you were impacted. It's important to us. And very early on, the president came out with it in 2015, and he came up during this process with six pillars. Build trust legitimacy, policy and oversight, technology and social media, community policing and crime reduction, training and education, officer wellness and safety. In a few seconds, I want to spend a couple of minutes, but it's about trust between law enforcement agencies and the people we serve, and we know how essential it is. So we've adopted this and how we think, how we deliver our message to our staff, how we deal with the public, and we've built policy off these beliefs. So let's talk building trust and legitimacy. It's not just us, it's decades of research and educators that have told us that if people will listen to the law and they'll work and partner with the police when they believe that we're being fair and that our authority is legitimate. That's why we're serious about what we do. We want to partner. It's the community, this town, that has placed us in this position, and we take that responsibility very seriously. We nurture trust and legitimacy. You've seen a lot of us working together and a lot of programs and our mindset of taking care of our community.
And I think one other aspect of legitimacy is internal, and that is with our employees in the police department. If you have nepotism, favoritism in a police department, then you lose your legitimacy from your employees as well, and that damages your ability to do your policing job the way you're supposed to, and that can also leak into the community.
I know a lot of you as selectmen have dealt with our staff, and it's not just Roger and I that are believing in this. This is us delivering our message down the line through our own practices, our own actions, our policy. But we're building a team of people that can just pick up this baton and carry it on the next day. The day after the deputy and I retire, they could just start doing this from day one. We're starting to implement department-wide. Policy and overtime. So we have a huge responsibility and we understand that. So we have to develop policies and strategies, and we use policy to regulate use of force, pursue mass demonstrations, although it wasn't a mass demonstration, you all just got a glimpse of how we act. You had a public vigil last week sometime, so you saw how we react. We're a little different than other agencies. We have a way of doing things in professional, and I think it works. We hold, then, not only do we have that policy, but then we hold staff accountable. We review pursuits, we review uses of force. Every single pursuit, every single use of force, and I'm talking everyone, requires paperwork, and then what happens? Deputy Chief?
Exactly. I have to review all use of force reports, sign off on them. So any use of force report, even the display, if an officer displays a taser or displays a handgun, that's a use of force. So I get the report on it, I have to review it. At the end of the year, I have to submit an annual report to the state of Connecticut where they have a secondary review process over our use of force.
So I want to take a second here because this just came up. Most of you were in our budget process when we came before you, and we came before you to present a budget, and I used words like "our budget is our public safety plan." Well, I'm serious when I say that. All of this planning in the background going on is the Six Pillars saying that you should embrace technology and you should use social media. When we went before the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen, we came before you for a technology and a communication supervisor. We wanted to use our technology to the utmost ability that we could do it. We wanted to use it in a way that was transparent and accountable and didn't violate people's rights. That's why we're doing what we're doing. It's our public safety plan. We're trying to do all of this as part of our core department values. We need to be efficient and effective and evolve. Do you remember saying that in budget meetings? We need to evolve as a police department, and that's what we're trying to do. And I want you to all think about your personal interactions with a police officer or this department. It came through coffee with a cop, virtual ride-along, toy drive, standing in front of Walmart, standing in front of the train museum. Those are the things that the Six Pillars told us to do. Increase engagement with your community and non-law enforcement ways to build trust, give access to your police officers in the public through social media. We do that, and I think we get an A+ for it. Community policing and crime reduction. We don't just have a singular police officer that we name as the community policing officer. We build it into the department. It's a guiding philosophy for us, and it highlights the importance of the community and all of our stakeholders, our residents, our business owners, other town departments, other criminal agencies. We try to work with everybody to solve problems. That's what officers are doing out in the field. Anything you want to add, DEP?
No, I think you hit it. I mean, community policing has been around for a long time. The idea of it became popular in the 80s. Both the chief and I come from an agency, a former agency, where it was ingrained in us that it was part of our daily job to do community policing, everybody's job. And we've kind of brought that message to the folks in East Windsor, and they've really done an excellent job of taking that up.
Officer training and education. So we have to talk about the police officers in the building. With the responsibility of law enforcement, it can be complex work and far-reaching, so we need to give them the best training and the best education that's available. We have multiple, multiple officers with advanced degrees, bachelor's degrees, advanced training. We have a third member of the department that went to the FBI National Academy, another member going to the administrative officers course in the next couple of months. So we placed value on education and we talk about it, and then partnerships. We have an exclusive agreement with Westfield State University that allows our people to sign up for courses there, go there and take classes, and they've taken advantage of it. The deputy really quickly talked about crisis intervention and de-escalation. Already, we have 11 and two dispatchers, and we're continuing to work on that much more rapidly than we initially thought. But we're also doing things like dealing with addiction, mental health, responding to, you know, problems in society, and it's changing. It's different than when I was a police officer 30 years ago, and we're adapting to it. And then safety and wellness, and I cannot tell you how important that this is. Selectmen Muska brought something up earlier in the meeting and talked about PTSD through life's experiences. Well, that comes through law enforcement, the things that we have to see and the attitudes that we have to deal with, especially now because it's extremely difficult to be a police officer right now. We have to take care of them. So we have to take care of them physically and emotionally. We have a gym in the building and they actively work out and use that. We've developed a peer support group. The deputy just approved the policy on that this week, where they're going to be trained and can assist each other. We have the EAP through the town, which is obviously good, but we have to go farther than that. I mentioned in this, part of the thing I said was first aid kits. That's one of the things we built. With COVID-19, response times in emergency rooms were a lot higher and longer for waiting. All of our police officers carry personal gear within their pockets, in their chest for gunshot wounds, if they were to get shot, to tourniquet and to put blood stoppers on them, all that. They carry that on their persons. So we prepare them physically and emotionally to do this job, and then we support them in doing it. On that prior screen, it mentions ballistic vests, and, you know, it's important that they have that and they have the best of gear. This is Eight Can't Wait, so the deputy, we immediately put out documentation as to where we are on the Eight Can't Wait. So I'm going to let the deputy explain what it is, and then I'm going to bring up his documentation.
Yeah, as Chief DeMarco mentioned, we are both PERF graduates, and as part of being a graduate from PERF, you create a network of people that you know. The Eight Can't Wait in pain, before it even came anywhere near New England, it came on my radar through PERF Network. I actually borrowed this setup from another agency, another PERF network person, and they shared it with the group, and I thought it was great, and I thought we should take a look at it. So basically, the Eight Can't Wait, it started out, I think, in California and started moving this way, and it is eight policies that a police department must have, and if you don't have it, you're not doing things right. So I looked at all of our policies and created this, that was up on our...
Facebook.
Facebook. We also put it on our website as well. So I don't know if I want to bore everybody with the details, but basically, it addresses every single one of the eight issues that we were in compliance with already, but on the chokehold, that's in the upper-left corner, we, as of today, pushed through a policy that is more restrictive on chokeholds, and it's basically, it has been pushed through post as well. They want every police department to change their policy to the language that's currently in the upper-left section there.
So if any of you have read the newspaper recently or saw media attention, Governor Lamont has come out already and has taken control and has passed some changes, and then alluded to some other changes that might be coming down the road, and we're already in compliance today. We're in compliance with what Governor had talked about, duty to intervene, duty to report, chokeholds, de-escalation. So we've updated our policy. It was going through the cycle for the last week. I signed off on it this morning, and it's now in the Power DMS system and headed to training and review by all the police officers in the department. Real quick, I want to talk about records review, data analysis, and early warning, and that basically, the deputy hit on it briefly with data analysis that we send to Ken Barone at the state, who then analyzes and looks at what we stopped versus varying races, ages, genders, times, did we search the car, did we not? And we're always in compliance, we're never on their radar for anything even close. So the records review of it is, we review monthly all of our records, whether police officers were assaulted or they used force. Incident-wise, the deputy gets it within a day and starts reviewing it. So basically, it's an early warning system. If the same police officer is getting assaulted or is having to use force, there might be a problem. So that would come up very early on through the data and the reporting that we do do. Real quick, I know I'm going long, but the Police Executive Research Forum also put out a very strong document called the Thirty Guiding Principles on Use of Force. It came out in 2016, and that's immediately, we started addressing some of our policy. When you see our policy, it talks about immediately providing first aid to someone you might have to use force on, to notify, you know, or having to intervene. That's where a lot of that was built. The PERF 30 was 30 principles, and we won't go over them all, but there were some, as you can see, the sanctity of human life should be at the heart of everything an agency does, and that's what we build in to our policy and to our people. So a lot of what you're seeing, and we're not reinventing the wheel, we're adopting the guidelines as we go across. Number 13, I'm going to carry it, bring your attention, because those are theories that came out when the deputy chief and I started our career. That was 21-foot rule. It says if a person has a knife and they're 21 feet away from you and they start to run at you and lunge at you with that knife to kill you, that inside the 21-foot range, that they can and will stab you. It's an old antiquated theory because that doesn't factor in the fact that I could back up, get behind a car, seek cover, create time, use voice and commands. So we talk about using distance and cover and time to replace outdated concepts, and we train that, aerial training and policy and everything else. This is a slide you'll recognize from our budget presentation. I added one thing, COVID-19. It has had an impact on our agency. This slide, one that we were before you during the budget season, said accreditation in the summer of this year. Unfortunately, we're, in the summer, we're going to have our mock scenario where they come in and check us, but we are there. We have accomplished everything we need to accomplish, we're building all our proofs, and we're ready to be an accredited agency. They'll come in in the summer, do a review, and most likely will be accredited in the fall, but that does a lot of good for our agency.
No, I mean, the core of accreditation in any career is to adhere to a set of standards that's accepted by a higher level. And these standards that are created by post C are basically gleaned from CALIA standards, which is a national accreditation standard, plus they added about 20 more standards to the accreditation process. So what it in effect is saying is that all the policies that a professional police department should have, we have them in place and we can prove that we're doing them.
So what are we doing now? And we're going to talk a little bit. There's been some new state policy regarding use of force that we just talked about a little bit, and there's a thing called Epic that we'll talk about in technology. I just want to clearly say to you, and we're serious when we say this, from the chief of police down to tenants, sergeants, police officers, and animal control officers, we are a community caretaking agency. We're committed to being a public safety agency, community-oriented policing, and we want to help people solve problems. That's what we try to do. Go ahead and cover Epic real quick.
Yes, Epic is something that was recently developed by New Orleans Police Department, and basically, at the core of this program, and I'm not sure that we're going to be able to take in all the program because it's an enormous program. If you're really interested, you go to, you can type in Epic, Ethical Policing is Rage is New Orleans Police Department, they have a whole website dedicated to it with all the training information on it. But basically, it's empowering your police department personnel to understand that if they see somebody doing something unethical, whether it be taking free coffee or using excessive force, regardless of what it may be, unethical issues. regardless of what it may be, unethical issues, that they are empowered to intervene and stop that person from doing it. And there's steps to do it and there's protection from that police officer, that there's not going to be any retaliation if they do do it. And it further says that it doesn't matter the rank of the person involved, that the newest police officer, if they see the chief of police doing something inappropriate, that they have the power and the authority to intervene.
And the responsibility and accountability for it. And then we want them to be able to take action. Let's talk about the ever watchful dash cameras and body cams. So we do employ dash cameras in the town of East Windsor in all of our cars. And it's worked very well for us. We can watch for quality control. We can watch for even policy violations or maybe a safety issue. We use it to document incidents and we're, we're good at redacting it and going through Freedom of Information and the camera business through dash cams.
If I could, Chief, just one small correction. We have it in five vehicles. We do not have it in all of our vehicles at this time. It's our goal to get it in all of our vehicles, but they're very expensive equipped.
Now, we'll build on the word expensive. Through personal and professional connections, I have worked very hard and I think I have cured a donation of $60,000 worth of body cameras. I've been told today that it was approved and it's going to fill out some paperwork and require me to do a lot of legwork. But it looks like sixty days from now, we'll have fifty body cameras for free.
Fantastic.
So we will continue again during the budget season. We usually try to put in for one or two dash cams. We don't need them in every car. You need them in every frontline car. And that's a term we use for a cruiser that comes out and does frontline and stops cars and things of that nature. What do you, to achieve that, what do we need? Two or three, Rog?
No, we would need, we have eleven basically frontline.
We need six more.
So we would need six more, yes.
That's the deal with that body camera wise. Now, mind you, cameras for free, a large, large part of it. But there is going to be licensing, cradles to charge it, cradles to interact and download the video. There may be a cost and I'll, I'll tell you what it is and you can decide whether you want me to accept the donation or not. I think body cameras is coming whether we want them or not. I'd like to get ahead of the curve as which we normally try to do in East Windsor. We want to let you know what we do and everything that's going on. It's, it's hard to tell you and update you in a way, but I, I think we're doing a good job and we have a very good police department to not suffer the problems that a lot of police departments are suffering from across the nation. We pay attention to the little stuff and it's paid for us. Anything in closing, Deputy?
No, I think we could maybe answer anybody's questions and maybe you could take down the PowerPoint so we could see folks' faces a little more clearer.
Gentlemen, thank you very much. That was, that was a wonderful presentation. I appreciate the time and the depth in which you went. Do any selectmen have any questions? Sarah?
Sarah Muska Selectman, it's more of a comment. I'd like to thank the chief and the deputy for giving this thorough presentation and thank them for their leadership and professionalism. I've gone on several ride alongs and state, you know, went to the Trolley Museum, was at some Coffee with the Cop and some of the events. And they've really done a great job on social media and earning the trust of this community. And it's apparent that the officers really care for the community they serve. So I just wanted to share my thoughts and thank them very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. A lot of the accolades have to go to the very dedicated women and men that we work with. They truly care about their community and they deserve those accolades. Our newest thing is going to be a cookout with a cop over the next month or so. We're going to be doing some broad bro.
That sounds awesome. Any other comments from members of the board? Selectman Baker?
Yeah, so I just have a, you know, I want to thank you guys actually because I think we, I mean, I think, you know, come budget time, everybody sees how expensive the fire, the police department is. And I guess when you see these presentations, you see, you're getting what you pay for. And I just want to thank you guys for your leadership long-term. It's not just what, you know, we've seen over the last couple of years, but you know, it's been noticeable for a decade or more, you know, that the, you guys have been on an upward swing. So it's, it's really great and I think you could be thanked more often. And I, and I'd like to extend the thanks to, you know, everybody else in the department if you have an opportunity to do that from all of us. But, and then I had a question for both of you that I'd like to have both of you respond to. How do you interpret the intent of the Black Lives Matter movement as a whole?
You want to start, Deputy, or do you want me to start?
Go ahead, Chief.
So I think there's two things. And we can't get confused with the fact that there are bad actor doing bad things with rioting, Antifa and things of that nature. Let's remove that from the equation because I don't care what the, the, it is. They're showing up to do damage and so on. As far as the issue, there are racism issues and police training issues and they have to be addressed. And I've been to training with, with large agencies and they don't always think like I do. And I think there needs to be a peace and calm protesting to bring changes come a lot over the course of our lives that, you know, we've read about the sixties and Rodney King and everything. And I think there's a reason to do that and they speak and I'm listening. I want to make better. I want to make it fair and impartial and I accept that and, and it's okay. So I, I think that's okay with removing all the other stuff that does, does occur.
And I can use this, I, I didn't create this myself. I actually saw it somewhere and I thought it was brilliant on the Black Lives Matter issue. And it was basically to compare the Black Lives Matter movement, take out the Black Lives Matter and plug in rainforest. We, we want to protect the rainforest, okay? And we want to protect black lives. It doesn't mean that all the other forests don't matter. It means that the rainforests are very important and they are in danger and we need to protect them. It doesn't bring down the value of any other forest or anything like that. And in this situation, Black Lives Matter mean, means that people of color feel that they're in trouble. And they're using their voices to let us know that they feel they're in trouble. They're not diminishing the lives value of anybody else. They're just telling us, look at us, we feel like we need help. And we're listening.
I would, just in closing, I'd have to say that your actions, your guys' actions over the time period, you know, fifteen years you guys have been here, something like that. I think that it proves what you've just said to us. It's, I think your actions speak, spoke before you even had the words. So kudos to, to all of you.
Well, I appreciate that because I just read an article where the most dangerous job in America right now is the police chief. No matter what happens, incident driven, Roger and I have been acting like this for the last fifteen years together. That one incident, and it's based on broken policy or bad movement and the police chief and the deputy chief get fired. So we build strong policy and strong training and we stay on it. We hold people accountable every day. So that's, we're serious about it. Some of the hard stuff and some of my people are struggling. I mean, they're out there and, and people will say blanket things like all cops are racist or all, you know, and that's simply not the case. We have a police department that truly cares about the community, everybody. So thank you for noticing because you're right. This is a different place than it was when I took over. It seriously was.
Yeah. Thanks, thanks again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Marie or Charlie?
Yeah, I didn't, yeah, I didn't have a question, so I didn't speak. But I just agree with what has already been said by Sarah and Alan. Our police department in the last, I'm going to say fourteen years, it's been second to none. Guys have really done your job. The issues of the past, I don't see them anymore. The officers take their time and haven't been stopped by one of your officers for rolling through a stop sign. You're absolutely right. The professional wasn't there. They told me exactly what I did. And we had a long discussion and they were absolutely right. You alluded to the event that took place on the South Lawn. And you guys were discreet. Couldn't ask for better. And you were there. You didn't have to be there. You could have sent your officers, but you guys took time to come out and represent the town of East Windsor and to be there if you were needed. So kudos to you guys. Keep up the good work and extend my appreciation to the rest of the department because I haven't heard anything negative from anybody in a long time. So, and when I do, it's addressed immediately. So kudos to you guys.
Thank you. I appreciate you noticing, Marie. I raised my hand and took my oath. It said that I would uphold the Constitution. And part of the Constitution is peaceful protest and congregation. And that's my job too, to allow you to do that.
Thank you.
Charlie, anything to add? Any questions for these gentlemen?
Nothing to add. Yeah, I just echo everything that's already been said. So great job, guys, and just keep up the good work. I've lived in town all my life and never has it been better than it is right now. So good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you again for, for taking the time to be with us and for putting together that presentation and for your stepping in terms of managing your agency. You guys are a testament to the badge that you wear. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next is a discussion, discussion and approval of the Emergency Plan Regulations for Local Elections. The Democratic Registrar of Voters is on. So if you'd like to join the conversation, he's certainly invited. As you can see from what was included, they are recommending adoption of the emergency regulations of the state of Connecticut. I don't know if anybody has any questions about them or wants to dig in a bit, but we have from both the Democratic and the Republican Registrar of Voters and by the town clerk to adopt these as our emergency procedures. Any questions or comments? Marie?
Yeah, I have a question. Reviewing these, doesn't seem that there's been any changes made to these since September of 2012. And having perused it several times as being moderator on Election Day, so what happens if things should occur? I don't see anything in here at all that specifically is related towards COVID-19 issues that the state are requiring that we do. I can look at things and say, okay, it might go in there, it might go in there. But with the review, I don't know if the state is going to be looking for anything regarding that. So I don't know if that's a question for you or a question for Angelo.
Well, that would certainly be a question for Angelo. But the, the, I would point out that they have last been revised in 2015.
Yeah, but if you look at the narrative in there, I mean, they signed off on 2015, but everything is September 28th, 2012 underneath every paragraph. Effective September 28th, all the way through, all the way through this.
So I think that, that more would be a question of, well, it's a question that Angelo can opine on, but it's also a public health question. Angelo, any comments here? Let's unmute him. Angelo? Still muted. There you go.
How about now?
Yep, good.
All right. So that particular document was to replace one that Linda and Dan did probably ten years ago. And it strictly relates to the statutes. And rather than recreate the wheel, that was a fine document, so we adopted it. There are a number of other areas that are discussed in the moderator's handbook that has been come out. But the majority of the more recent COVID things, I think we have to do what Governor Lamont has issued in his directives and orders so that we can comply as best we can. Without the particular document in front of you, we cannot apply for the grant that's going to pay for all of our masks and shields and gloves and wipes. So it serves that purpose. But I think the moderator trainers themselves probably are more specific and more timely than what's, what's before you. But that's the best that the state has to offer. We don't, we, Karen and myself and Joanne don't think we can do any better than what's there with respect to the, the, the program that the state's requiring us to have in order to participate in the grant.
Okay. Thank you.
So the request is, is submitted to us by the registrars for the board to adopt their, their, adopt and approve their emergency contingency plan as submitted. Anybody else have any questions or comments on this?
It was great reading.
Liar.
As having, having thumbed through the regulations for state agencies, it's dry. So if there are no other questions or comments, I'd ask for a motion to accept the recommendation of the registrars to adopt the emergency plan as submitted.
So.
I'll second it.
Moved by Marie, seconded by Alan. Further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Selectman Ordell?
Aye.
Selectman Muska?
Aye.
Selectman Baker?
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza?
Aye.
Plan is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you, Angelo.
Thanks, Angelo.
Okay, I got to find my next thing now. So 10C was the added agenda item, which is, there is a petition that's circulating that is requesting that municipalities individually, so let me say this, that municipalities as one group either sign or not sign a petition to the governor asking for an extension of the moratorium on evictions and to provide rent relief to Connecticut residents. This is, oh, did I, did I email you guys this? Or is this something I was going to pull up on the, I did email you this? Okay. We basically sign it as one community or not sign it as one community, but Melissa, as the Director of Community Services, can't sign it as well as the first selectman, as well as the, John Q, anybody? So the question before you is, are you satisfied, are you okay with us signing a petition to encourage extension of the, of the moratorium? There is some concern that she has in particular about the demand for assistance that's going to come when the moratorium expires, particularly on utility costs, but certainly on, on rent is going to be a big thing as well. So she's asked us to consider doing this. I'm very comfortable doing that. The governor put the moratorium in place through an executive order and could just as easily extend it with an additional executive order. But this is putting the town on record that this is what our position is. And so I thought it best to come to you guys before we decided to move forward or not. Anybody?
This sounds like this petition is more for housing authority and housing projects more so than it is. and housing projects more so than it is a government entity such as us. I know it was sent to all of the, um, social services people and they've asked them to have, uh, I think the word they used was organization sign, um, and to spread it out.
Yeah, that clause speaks to, as you can see, it speaks to housing and non-housing organizations. We are a non-housing organization that has a function in the eviction process when that comes about. Uh, and because of the social service component of that is why Melissa's asking us to, to sign onto this.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure my understanding of why you were so signing onto it, um, was out there, and thank you for that, because I wasn't exactly sure. Um, now, would you be signing it, would, or would Sarah, uh, would, um, uh, Melissa sign it?
Um, I probably would, but we would talk about that before doing it tomorrow.
So, basically, the upshot of signing this is, is should there be an increase in services because an increase in helping people because of, uh, what's been going on? We can either decide to take that hit locally or spread it out statewide. Right? By allowing the, you know, a moratorium for a little bit longer, so maybe people can get themselves caught up. Maybe they can get a job. Maybe they can take care of things without, if they just get dropped off right now, we're gonna eat that or a portion of that because our, our social services dollars are going to, uh, are gonna have to cover, and maybe we don't have enough right now.
Well, I think it's not just a question of our social service dollars, but it's an impact on our constituents. Somebody's battery low? The, it, so it's, it's more of the, the impact on our constituents and their quality of life. You, you're, the rest of your points are spot on, that we're trying to give folks an opportunity to, um, extend the, the timeframe to get back on their feet. Hi, Melissa.
And so I'm in favor for either reason, for both.
Anybody else? The expert here, if anybody has any questions. Well, then, um, I don't need a vote to do this. I just really wanted to get your, your blessing. You guys are welcome to vote to authorize us to do it, but absent that, we just will, and Melissa and I will talk in the morning.
Can we make it a consensus, Jason, rather than a vote, that we're all in agreement? This way it's on record?
Yep. We can do if you want.
Yeah, I'd like to do a consensus of the board, um, to allow Jason and Melissa to go ahead and do what's necessary to, uh, sign, sign this petition for the town.
Good.
Selectman Ordell, agreed.
Sarah Muska, Selectman, I'm in favor as well.
Melissa will talk in the morning.
Thanks, Melissa.
How does she always know? Um, okay, Selectmen's Reports. So today marks, uh, the end of East Windsor's academic school year, and today our high school seniors graduated, though not in the fashion many of them expected to. Uh, I'd like to thank the East Windsor Public Schools' leadership for their creativity with feedback from our, uh, our district parents. Tonight, our students were able to celebrate in a very different way. This year, students were allowed to walk individually across the stage and receive their diplomas with their parents as the only people in the audience on video for broadcast, and they were able to take commemorative photos at the school with their families. Um, the town celebrated them through a community-wide parade this evening, uh, from East Windsor Middle School to East Windsor High School, and the, the gathering just outside Town Hall was awesome. There were people who had, uh, signs made and there were decorations out and people who looked like they were actually, uh, having a, a picnic. Um, it was a, a showing from the community to celebrate these students as they, um, as they move on to their next journey. But I, I have said a couple of times in public comments, and I just want to share tonight, that, um, these graduates were born in the wake of 9/11. They grew up during the worst economic downturn since the Great Depression, and they have completed their high school education amidst a global pandemic. They have experienced three once-in-a-lifetime events in their short lives. Um, it's clear that this graduating class of students is going to face challenges in life and that they're more than capable of facing those in their own way, and I think the entire community is proud of them. Um, you may have seen the story in the Hartford Business Journal discussing the new solar development coming to the Charbonneau gravel pit in town, but you may not have seen that the developers have now started, uh, an interactive open house website that, uh, has launched. That's gonna be posted on, um, on my report later. I posted on a couple of social media pages yesterday. Um, these guys have been open and inclusive in the project so far, and I know that they'll be a great addition to our community. Uh, since our last meeting, we've provided the developers with comments from the town's professional staff on their application before it's been submitted to the planning, or to the Connecticut Dating Council. Uh, we've done a presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission and to the Wetlands Commission, answered any question those representatives have had. In the coming weeks and months, they'll also be stepping up their public engagement by engaging, uh, budding property holders. The town is also close to issuing a certificate of occupancy for the new International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers Training Facility located in the industrial park. We were able to attract them to town because of our location, our proximity to the highway, and because Lincoln Tech is just down the road. The facility is a state-of-the-art training facility that helps educate electrical workers across multiple states, and we're excited to welcome them to the community. Last week, community members held a vigil to affirm our community's sense of sancti, of the sanctity of life in the wake of the tragic George Floyd killing. About forty-five people showed up, and speakers included Senator Anwar, Representative Davis, and myself. And was spearheaded by Rick Laborious. The Board of Selectmen, as you guys just witnessed, also asked the Police Department to review and report on policies currently in place in our department, uh, to prevent similar tragedies from happening, happening in East Windsor. Yesterday marked the start of Phase Two of Connecticut's reopening. Ninety-five percent of the economy is now able to open, uh, to be open up and running, albeit with certain restrictions in some cases. I encourage anybody who, who is, uh, comfortable venturing out to, uh, into the public to, to support our local businesses when they can. Included in the reopening is the re-institution of Little League in the town of East Windsor. Uh, the parents who run Little League have done a great job developing guidelines to focus on keeping players, coaches, and parents safe while still enjoying Little League this summer. I'd like to thank, uh, Melissa Maltesse for her help in, in guiding them towards the development of those, um, policies and procedures. Um, she's a very hands-on person, who's a great addition to, and a great, great, great. Um, the dog park, the Dog Park is also now reopened, and East Windsor Park and Rec has issued clarifications on passive recreational activities that are allowed and encouraged in our town parks. Um, and lastly, the Charter Revision Commission has completed the initial phase of their work, having reviewed the charter and held, having held several public hearings. Um, they've made recommendations to us, uh, to be addressed on this year's presidential ballot. More on that will be forthcoming and will likely be taken up by the Board of Selectmen at our next meeting. Um, they have done a tremendous amount of work in a short period of time, and I thank all of the members for their dedication. That's all I have. Uh, Selectman D'Souza.
I would like, I would like to start off repeating words expressed at the Gathering for Racial Justice held on June 12, 2020. In East Windsor, we are fortunate to have a police department committed to emphasizing service to community as a priority. We gathered to offer a somber statement expressing our disdain for racism in all of its ugly forms. We took a knee and illuminated candles in remembrance of George Floyd and to recognize Black Lives Matter. Glad to see the second phase of COVID-19. Um, openings are taking place. Remember to safeguard your health moving forward. Like to congratulate all the East Windsor High School graduates. 2020 has been a difficult year thus far, but I look forward for this new generation to bring positive change to this world. I wish a sex to all of you regardless of your chosen path. Life is what you make it, so make it good. Um, need to make a correction on my report from last month. I had indicated last month that the Economic Development Commission meeting met on June 2nd. Um, they didn't have a quorum, um, so therefore the meeting was canceled. Um, but I wasn't aware of that, so I had reported that I didn't attend it. Um, June 4th, I attended a regular Board of Selectmen meeting. Um, the Register of Voters meeting on June 9th was, uh, canceled, although I did go down to the office on June 11th, um, to go over some, uh, issues with Denise Menard, who was our, um, new, uh, COVID-19, um, coordinator. On June 12th, uh, like I said, I participated in the, um, racial justice gathering, and then on the 17th, the Broadbrook No Remediation Committee was canceled again, and that's all I have.
Selectman Ordell.
Selectman Ordell, um, on Wednesday, June 10th, I attended the Police Commission meeting, um, in which they discussed how for quite some time, uh, it's been their policy to have close social ties with the community. They also train officers to de-escalate a situation first and put physical force as a last result. Um, as we heard tonight from Chief Demarco and Deputy Hart, um, in his presentation, um, I commend them on what I feel is good policing and have a good reputation with the community. Any of my encounters with the police in East Windsor has always been respectful and professional. They get an A-plus from me. Um, later that evening, I joined in on the Board of Education meeting, which Selectman Muska I'm sure will report on. Um, last Thursday, Selectman, Selectman Sarah Muska put together a live Facebook town meeting on PTSD. This included, um, Senator Saud Anwar, East Windsor Police Officer McNeese, um, doctors, counselors, veterans, and Sarah. Um, I commend her on sharing her story and putting this special meeting together to help support individuals with PTSD. Good job, Sarah. On Saturday, June 13th, I attended a small social distance gathering of new members of the East Windsor PTO. Uh, they're still looking for a vice president. If anyone with a student in the elementary school or middle school has an interest in the position or joining the PTO, please contact Jen Blanchard or myself for more information. Um, Jason and myself are sitting in on DPW negotiation meetings. Um, this is still an ongoing process, but currently things look amicable. Um, I also attended the Charter Revision Public Hearing, which was not well-attended, but I'm hopeful that that is because no one objects to the fine work that has been accomplished by this board. Um, they've done a lot of great things in a short period of time, like Jason said. Um, I think they're on the right track, and I hope their endeavors continue to get support within this board and eventually the town voters. Uh, earlier tonight, I also attended the graduation parade honoring East Windsor High Schools from the front of Town Hall. Um, it was great to see a big crowd at Town Hall, um, congratulating them as they passed by in decorated cars. I wish the best of luck to our class of 2020. Upcoming events, um, the opening of restaurants, obviously, and businesses, like Jason says. The Trolley Museum will be opening up this weekend. Um, East Windsor Dog Park, like Jason mentioned, um, and, and many others, so check websites for that. Uh, this weekend's Father's Day weekend, so I'd like to say Happy Father's Day to all the dads out there. And, um, and summer is also upon us too. It's hard to believe. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Selectman Muska.
On Tuesday, June 9th, the Warehouse Point Fire District held a special meeting to discuss and nominate candidates for the three open positions on the Warehouse Point Fire District Board of Fire Commissioners. A drive-through vote will take place on June 29th at 7:00 PM at Station One. On Wednesday, June 10th, I listened in on the Police Commission meeting, as Selectman Ordell just discussed, before attending the Board of Education meeting shortly after. The Board of Education recognized the outstanding students and Crystal Apple Award recipients from each school for the fourth quarter. The Board conducted an evaluation of the superintendent and extended Dr. Christine Devarge's contract until 2023, giving a 2.2, excuse me, 2.25% raise. It should be noted that she did not take a raise last year. All summer school will be remote, and discussion continued on how the school year will be conducted in the fall based on the COVID-19 pandemic. Although things are still up in the air, the CIC is calling for the return of fall sports, and posting for coaching positions will begin soon. On May 20th, the Board of Education received the resignation of Board Member Kathy Billado. I would like to thank Kathy for her dedication to our community and to our youth in her ten-plus years of service as a board member. On Thursday, June 11th, in honor of PTSD Awareness Month, it, it was my pleasure to co-host a live Town Hall on Facebook with Senators and Doctor Saud Anwar, titled "Post-Traumatic Stress Disorder: A Silent Epidemic." We were joined by East Windsor Police Sergeant David McNeese, Karen O'Connor Foley, the Executive Director from the Network Against Domestic Abuse, First Sergeant Jerry Wright, a retired veteran, and Dr. Ally Shamsey, Assistant Clinical Professor from Yale University. Myself and the other panelists were proud to share our experiences, raise awareness, and provide resources and assistance to members of our community that might be struggling with this disorder. On June 12th, I also attended the Peaceful Vigil at Sunset in the Town Hall parking lot in support of equality and condemning racism. On Monday, June 15th, the Capital Improvement Planning Committee met to discuss the allocation of $1,001,4668 fiscal year 2020, 2021 funding, and they will be sending their recommendations to the Board of Selectmen. On June 16th, I also attended that Charter Revision Commission public hearing. Um, the commission has made, made great progress, and First Selectmen also touched on what the next step will be. Yesterday evening, the Board of Finance met and discussed that the town will be seeking reimbursement for COVID-related expenses, including $30,000 in food expenses from serving breakfast and lunch at the middle school while school has been closed. The town has made the budget in taxes and state revenue for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 year. And prior to this meeting, I was proud to stand at Town, Town Hall and cheer and congratulate the East Windsor graduating class of 2020 as the car parade traveled through Broadbrook. It was such a great way for our community to recognize these students and their families in this time. Uh, best wishes in your next chapter, and I'd also like to commend all of our students and staff of all grades for a great year and for adapting and adjusting to the social distancing, and enjoy your summer. Thank you.
Selectman Baker.
Um, okay, so I had, uh, one meeting this week, this past week, uh, with Wetlands had a special meeting to accept an application for uh, a subdivision on the corner of, uh, East Road and Depot Street, 14 Houses. Um, so they'll be hearing that application, uh, in, at the July 2nd meeting, I think it is. Anyway, well, there's a, uh, that was pretty much, that was all they had on that meeting. Um, and I was not able to attend any other meetings, uh, since we last met. But I, I just wanted to relay this, uh, a, a conversation I had twenty years ago with a guy I worked with, um, that keeps going through my head over the last couple of weeks as we've been going through this thing with, uh, George Floyd. Um, so this guy I worked with, he moved his family from the South to come up and find work, I guess, in, in the Northeast, and we would get together on Fridays, uh, you know, at the Hartford Brewery to have a beer and just BS. And, uh, one, one day he was, uh, relating to me a number of incidences that him and his wife had, um, of racism that they had endured in, in the South, um, over the years, and and how openly racist people were, and, and I was naive, and I said to him, you know, you should be, you must be glad that you're, you're in the Northeast where, you know, that, that kind of stuff doesn't go on. And he, he, his response was a real eye-opener, and I've never forgotten it. He said, you know, actually, it was kind of easier down south because people were just straight-up racist. They, you knew where you stood. And in the Northeast, a lot of times, people are not racist to your face, but it's there and, and you get it. You get, you, you, you see what happens, and that, you know, that speaks to the systemic racism that I, I do believe um, we have in, in a lot of facets of our society. So, I mean, it always stuck with me, and it reminded me that we, we need to, when, when it comes to race, rather than having, telling other people what we should, they should feel, and, you know, back and forth, which is, a lot of that has been going on in the last couple of weeks in, on Facebook. We should just check ourselves, uh, really check ourselves and remember that we should just check ourselves, really check ourselves, and remember that racism is taught at home, and that's how we get rid of it, is to teach something else. So that's a, just kind of the message I wanted to share about, you know, kind of current events. And, and it's something I just always try to remind myself as I go through life. Thanks, that's it.
I gotta tell you, Alan, I think that is a really on-point way of kind of bringing the current circumstances home. Thanks for sharing that story. I had one other thing that I omitted from my report that I meant to include. You, you will notice that for the last week or so, we have been posting East Windsor Middle School student art on the town's Facebook page every day. I was asked, and a couple of others were asked to judge the art submissions from our middle school students this year. There were 36 submissions, and I was able to narrow it down to 12. And they, they said that you have to get, you have to pick your top three, and I gotta tell you, that was an impossible task. So I asked the principal of the middle school, Mr. Field, if we could highlight each of those submissions for the month of June. So every day, we're gonna, until we have, have displayed each of those submissions, we're gonna be posting a different piece of middle school art on the town's Facebook page. And as we go along, I just want to make sure that, that when people are, happen to see that, that they remember that these are middle school kids who did this. Some of these things that have been posted so far and, and that are still to come are penetratingly good. And it's just every day, I actually look forward to seeing the next one that's posted, having already seen them all. So I, I hope that people can take those in and enjoy them as much as, as much as I did. It was, it was really, really, really impressive. So that, um, this is the, we're gonna move on to the public's second opportunity to address the board. If there are any issues that people who are still on the call would like to bring up with members of the Board of Selectmen, I'll open the floor and, and we'd love to hear what you have to say. Is there any public participation? Seeing none. We will have an executive session. Peg, there will not be any. I don't think there will be any votes taken. We'll catch up with you tomorrow if that's, if that's incorrect, but otherwise, I entertain a motion from the board to go into executive session, and it would just include the five of us.
Thank you.
Sarah Muska, selectman, I'll move that we go into executive session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alan. All those in favor of going into executive session? Sarah?
Aye.
Marie?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
We're in executive session at 9:13. It's 9:45. The Board of Selectmen is coming out of executive session and reconvening. We have no further business on tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Alan. Is there a second?
Nordell will second that.
Seconded by Charlie. It's non-debatable. All in favor of adjournment? Selectman Nordell.
Aye.
Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman D'Souza.
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 9:45.